Chair of seven P M. First thing I'm going to move over is the hybrid meeting. This is a hybrid public meeting, the public in attendance, person or electronically. Bottom line is if you're attending electronically and you have a question or would like to be heard during an audience decision, please raise your hand, wave at us, do something to grab our attention, we'll call on you, give us your name and address before you make your comments. If there's anybody who is disruptive or unruly in the meeting, you will be asked to leave the meeting and then I will just cut you off. You will look at the public input for anything during the audience decision and also you can write in the chat. So. Next, pleasure of allegiance, please join me.
Our pleasure allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My calls regular board, the former board of selectmen to order at seven P M. Tuesday, June twenty first year twenty twenty two at seven P M. Who will have the agenda? We have any discussion on that? I made a motion that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? Prove the prior minutes. June seventh, June seventh, yes, somebody may have the agenda.
I moved it to approve the minutes of June seventh.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Next is the audience of citizens. Anybody that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, anybody in the chat? Seeing none, we know who's on tonight. Is there anybody?
No, nobody's on chat, no public input and.
Wondering, let's move, this is new business, discussion on the economic development and the economic development board. We invited Paulstrom back to this, we missed him and we respect the work that he's done and look forward to what he's going to tell us.
Well, it's good to be back. Definitely a different view of the whole place. It's been slow and unfortunately it's just so far it's really just Bill and I around the commission and tried a couple of my people. Person is probably sometime in July will be bringing another person on board, so that's a positive. I have no time walking around to the businesses here in town, stop by and kind of get some feedback. Most people, you read between the lines, are pretty happy to be here in Columbia. Everybody wants lower taxes, of course. But I think one of the things that I did come through and listen to them a lot, they'd like more. Trying to think of this one back, like in Hebron, they do things and people get kind of promoted in town. Town does things that allows them to get their name out there so people know that this is. So Bill and I kind of talked about that and one thing that Columbia doesn't have that most towns do have some sort of event. And we have the Fourth of July parade, which is great. But it's during them, we did, we all walk through the parade, it's over, everybody goes home. It's really minimal stuff. Hebron has the opposite affair, they have fireworks, they have pumpkin thing, they have people fest. You know a lot of these things, so we'd like to do, this we talked about was having some sort of event, a yearly event. What examples that, I mean, it's a dog show we have here in town. I did, I was one of the judges this year. It was really good, except there was hardly anybody there. So if we could have one event someplace where we can have multiple things going on, I thought the right. Because it's, I found the best assets in town. And Bill and I were thought of one example I'm throwing out to you guys would be a triathlon. In town, we've got, we have a lake, we have roads, we have the airline trail. I mean, I didn't, this is very, you know, very preliminary, I haven't talked to anybody. One of the things I would like to do is that, this is more things to, okay, I do, when I talk to other people here in town, businesses and stuff. I could suggest, I mean, like I fireworks, when I still own my business, I would buy a little park area at the fireworks and Hebron. You know, sponsor, it's one of the sponsors, whether we have something like that. Or food trucks from local vendors or anything, you know, something that someone would like to do and could showcase himself at an event where they get enough people here in town, biggest people out of town, which was the thought of the triathlon. Bill knew a little bit about this organization to do that. I don't know if it's even feasible, but I thought it makes, it would make sense to talk to the board first before I start talking to people that it's a possibility. It doesn't have to be a triathlon, that was something I came up with, I'd be open to any suggestions, but that seems like, I don't think there's anything like that in this part of the state. If we do a good one, it might be something to help people. So I'm just looking for feedback and Bill, if you got any wanted to add into that.
Well, as far as that, you know, the Hartford Marathon Foundation has sponsored a number of, I know they were doing things in Glasson, where they were doing a buy-ask month years ago. So I don't know whether some kind of organization has the skill to set up all the, you think you need as far as timing and everything else to help you run it. But at least, I would like to at least explore that. It would be a nice thing to have, an annual thing in the time, I know we have the other race up the rec park and sponsors, but it would be nice to do something in addition to that.
Again, it's, I have no date in mind, so I'm not, this isn't for the shit.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea and it'll take some time to put it together. I actually threw something out a year ago and talked to Mark Wells about it is between from Bolton to here, doing a triathlon with, start off on your bike. In Andover, you drop the bike and you run down to a portion down here and you get a kayak and you kayak down to the main moose area where everybody finishes. I talked to the first electman Pam Sawyer and she's, you know, open to the idea. It's an idea, I like your idea. The other thing that I've seen is things called Spartan, Spartan runs where there's obstacles, kids do it, I know they've done it at the school. But you can do them for adults and stuff and it only has to be a few things or a dozen things in a five mile trek. We could have historical scavenger hunts type of thing, find this location, but I think they're great ideas, so thank you for bringing it up. I think if we brainstorm and, you know, talk about things, we can come up with something that's, that's good, so I look forward to it. When do you meet? When did you meet? Did you, well, you met with?
The base, the base meeting anyways, I was, I was going to be, so we kept that in there.
Okay, that's one of the first things we should do is promote that, the Economic Development Committee to do things. So we'll help you there. I'd like to sit in. Too many ideas running through his head, it's ridiculous. But you're right, we put a lot of money into Rec Park, Rec Park looks great. I don't want to wreck it by doing obstacle courses all over the place, but certainly it is going to be a place where you could start or end festivities and.
Yeah, that's a general, that's where you have the food trucks, games, kids.
On August sixth, we have, we're going to have a townwide picnic up at Rec Park for a ribbon cutting of the new pavilion up there. We talked about it, trying to get it for the Fourth of July, I was told it was too ambitious, it's not Rec Park. The pavilion may be done and usable, but they couldn't put it together to have it really, so I think we're looking at August sixth, we're trying to put the final touches on that. So certainly, and I commend you for getting out and talking to the business people to find out. We do our best with the taxes, but.
They say have children, yeah, you know, I think they know.
We're, yeah, I get it, but really to help promote their businesses and Mark and I have blown the dust off of the Route six upgrade of the corridor, the study that was done years ago and we're looking at that again because the layout of it all happens down there on the north side of Columbia and it opens up a whole new business district along Route six. So it would be a conjunction with Bolton, Andover, a little bit of Coventry and Columbia would benefit highly for that. And it would be on one side of the town, we would have our, you know, rural country, beautiful farm area on this side would be lifestyle over there would help. I talked to Howard a lot at the Plaza down there, he's the owner. He has asked if we could put up a board down there, you are entering the shopping corridor or something. Columbia will manage the shopping corridor to help certainly promote his business, but as you look down there, there are businesses that are, that would benefit also from it, so. There's a lot of ideas out there, so.
Well, it'd be nice because as you can see, he's put some, he's put his money in the pocket today, I was cleaning that up really nice.
Yeah.
Now I did the original, the original work before I started doing anything, it's just amazing, it looks a lot better.
Yeah, and I think, so there's a lot of things being thrown out there. I found it says, you know, you throw it up against the wall, some of it actually sticks and so, you know, again, I commend you for, you know, spearheading this, let's get involved, let's put some stuff together, let's really, really do some things. I'm all for it and I know a lot of people in town are, so what's our next step?
Can I give a suggestion? If, no, I won't mention that. If economic development can go to either the Lions or the Historical Society. Do you see the organizations that run these events, like the Historical Society was the one running that dog show and it was the Lions that do the Fourth of July parade.
Well, I think to pull off this, I'm trying to think big, to pull this off, we're going to have to have everybody on board. Both of the, this is, let's throw any, any group in town that does things would have to be on board and that's how it's going to work because that's only where you get to work out people. You know one group, and that's the problem, the Historical Society has a dog show, everybody involved with the Historical Society shows up, but it's hard to get anything. We got down playing, it was fun and we had a good time, but it was, it was a really good event, it was too bad more people didn't see it, that kind of thing.
Right. Unfortunately, there's a lot of, a lot of events doesn't get enough either publicity or participants or bystanders to watch it. You know, we had the, we had the vintage baseball team for a while. People went up there and played and there was, you know, twenty people watching and it was a good time. But you can add on to those things, like bring up food trucks and, you know, have things for the kids and it would make it more of an event, a townwide event, an event for people to commit to.
Give something for each group to go to and then they see the other.
They have a reason to go.
Like you go, you go to Hebron Fair, there's multiple little things going on, I'm just talking about the riots, but there's like the pig races and tractor pulls and all this stuff. And I think you should do that. You have different things going on that are appropriate for our town, our rec park.
Right.
Have a pickle, a pickle football tournament or something.
No, absolutely, absolutely. So I actually talked to the whitering about clearing some of that field below and he said, and when I was talking to him, I said, you know, you have a grape section there, just carve it out of the side. You can take a little bit to flatten it out, plant some, plant a nice field there. And I said, you could have cornhole tournaments every weekend or volleyball tournaments or croquet, you know, old time croquet type events and, and people would come to those things. And he then said to me, I really, I want to put like a soccer field there. Great, and you can use it as a multi-purpose field. So there's people who have ideas and they'd like to see it happen. It's just going to take, you know, a real driving force to get it done. So again, I'm, let's keep going.
So years ago, Hebron, the P T O, sometimes they did a, they used to sponsor a business thing or business fair. That's what it was, with all local businesses and then they would, you know, the kids would sell cookies or whatever and so the P T O actually did it and used the school. Nice place for people, it was indoors, they had a big enough facility for people to go and set up a little booth indoors, it's a nice winter thing.
And on that, I mean, I was looking at there, somebody made a comment about something on everything Columbia. But not a day goes by, somebody's looking for a recommendation on somebody to do something for them. Paid in Columbia, I need somebody to hang two doors and do this, just thought, I can, anybody recommend this? Anybody recommend that? We should be able to talk to businesses in Columbia and I think having something like that is probably an excellent idea.
You know, that's why I used to do this.
Yeah.
We have one business down here, if you get the list, it's surprising, there's one people here.
Well, and you could even get out of town or that do a lot of contractors who do a lot of working now, so.
So this August sixth, that might be, I don't know when you'd want to hold it, but that might be a good experiment to see how well that's, people come to that.
Right now it's twelve to two, we'll, we'll get all the cooking going before that, to three.
To see how, that, that becomes like a time slot that people think of that might, if we plan something next year, that might be a time slot to try to, you know, create our spot.
Yeah.
Because there's so much going on every time that there's like, I just want, I just think it's time to Columbia had their thing. And with, with disrespect to the Fourth of July parade, I love it, but it's, it's a little bit, doesn't last long, it doesn't have that.
It's an hour, it's two hours and then, you know, everybody just goes, hey, great, boom, and they're gone, they scatter, you know, so, yeah, absolutely.
Because nobody wants to work on that day and if we did an event after, people would be working on that.
They wouldn't, but we have five of us here that would work, I know that and people from East Hat would love to come and work it.
I'd be there.
Listen, I mean, I, I can shame a few people to volunteer, it's a great community. Give me, she's the pavilion, you know, reader, so, now.
So here correctly, we want to pursue this and see where we can go.
Yeah, absolutely. Get some ideas, work on the ones you have, whatever you want to do, Rob, please, and, you know, if you need something from here. We'll work it out.
I think that's a great idea.
Let's do what you do. Go in here.
Excellent. We actually do more things if you want to stick around. No, thank you so much. Anybody, I'm sorry, anybody else got a shirt for Rob? Good? Perfect.
Have a good evening.
Never.
Just want the advantage of not being in the work.
Next, we have a motorcycle cherry ride, David Zelaya for American Legion, is that what it's called?
American Legion Post one ninety seven.
Has to be able to use part of Columbia for, Columbia for a motorcycle cherry ride. What do we have on that?
It's on July tenth, so I just need that as a motion to authorize the from Marlboro to the American Legion Post thirteen for traveling through Columbia on July tenth.
Alright, so I moved to approve a motorcycle cherry ride from American Legion Post one ninety seven in Marlboro to the American Legion Post fourteen in Vernon and they will travel through Columbia on July tenth, twenty twenty two. We have a time that's happening?
The party around thirty in Marlboro, so.
Nine thirty Marlboro?
No.
At least these motorcycle rides are, they're allowed.
So it's between one thirty.
It's going to be quarter, quarter of twelve to, it's going to be noise.
What the, who, what is July tenth, is it Sunday?
Fourth of July is, I think it is.
Okay, you know, that's not really good.
Okay, but where do they go to?
Sixty-six and thirty.
I guess you don't know.
Tell, tell father they had a fast mess.
That what?
Tell father they had a fast mess.
You been over there lately? Nothing's fast over there. It's good, it's thirty years old.
Just one, it's going to get noisy a little.
You know what?
I was asking to postpone a half, fifteen minutes, all you need is fifteen minutes.
You don't want to tell them not to do it.
So the lead model at eleven thirty? Alright, I'll tell them they're going through here at eleven forty, so.
Ask Ben to figure out the pixel.
Oh, yeah.
Keep the rail open, send that to the board versus sitting there idling.
Well, that's the other.
They're, they're having the escort.
Work on that. Can you have a discussion? Just the, all those in favor? Get him heads up.
Yeah, what, just call him, yeah, heads up.
What were you going to say?
Seven point three.
Congregational church parsonage tax abatement.
So what happened was the parsonage was being rented, it wasn't being used as a parsonage, so it was taxable. So when the grant list hit on October first of two thousand and one, it was a taxable item. So the assessor thought that the board of selectmen could abate the tax now that a minister's moved in and is back being the non-taxable parsonage. But after further review, they would have had to appeal it to a supportive assess appeals, this didn't happen until after board assess appeals, so that window is shut. So basically it has to stay on the tax rolls, it'll automatically be tax exempt at the next tax. Unfortunately, unless we had ordinance, board of selectmen cannot prorate a tax without, or just be a word, without being a refund request from the tax collector.
But they can go through appeal.
They can, but.
It's too late.
Right.
We can't, because this just happened, I just had another conference call on this and due to the timing, we can't do it. So I don't have, I don't have a way out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So, I mean, right, right now they have to pay the taxes. Is this like an uncommon?
It, it's timing, you know, when you, when you're bouncing back and forth thinking a property taxable and non-taxable, it all depends on what happens. As to when you set.
Yeah, because next year, if the, if the pastor moves out, the day after this is set and we don't tax it for a year, right?
Right.
So.
It's on October first.
October first is the key, that's what sets the green list.
And you have very finite time.
And then you have a time period to appeal, like the church could have said, whoa, 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 that's, we're moving a pastor in there, but they missed board of assessment rules.
Seven four recreation park, recreational rec park celebration, August sixth. I meant that to like eleven to. We have a lot of people.
Two blocks, two hours, it's not that big.
Yeah, people there, you know, asking for a house though.
What, what day is that? The week is it a Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
August sixth is a Saturday. Is there a Sunday?
We will be looking for volunteers to help out. Is that something you'd want to, because it's going to cost money?
It will be some, but we would use, we'll find.
Right. Yeah, so we have to go on or what?
You want the support of the board.
I make a motion, we have the celebration at Rec Park on August sixth from eleven to two, all those in favor? Columbia Lake, nothing? Okay, you're up. Oh, appointments and resignations, so. I moved to appoint Beth Lunt as tree warder for the town of Columbia. Why that move?
Our tree warder just left to go work with Wyndham.
Was he primary?
Yes, and Andy is still our tree warder, our foreman, and Beth is already a trained tree warder, so she does not have to do the classes.
Is she picking up the stipend for that, Mark?
No.
Okay, so Andy's going to be our primary?
I, I don't know how that would be, whatever.
Okay, any questions, discussion?
You don't need to be an arborist, the license is.
She has her certification, she took all the training we, we want.
But it's not, you don't have to work arborist, it's a different qualification. Arborist is a long time.
Right.
Alright.
But the, the course is intensive, it's not an easy course to pass.
Oh, I, I took the Connecticut nursery students course years ago, I get it, but it's still not very good.
Correct.
All those in favor?
And if they, if they had a serious question, they would bring it in the arborist, if they want that.
I'm happy to say that one of our new hires, six months ago, Fred Benarski. No, Benarski. Okay, so completed a six month probation period, so I moved to approve Fred Narski from the six month probation place now as a full-time employee. Discussion, all those in favor? You got a time, Mr. George?
Yes, I just wanted, we talked about this last, two weeks ago, this is a revised billboard that Katie recommended to use the Sarnac funds to put up to highlight that vaping is
I think everybody had a copy?
There's one sitting on here, under the tier for tax.
The first, it's a lot, it's, I like it.
It's, we calmed it down from the last one, the last one was trying to tell too much, so this one's simpler. And they're just trying to.
So in my ignorance, that brand equals forty cigarettes, that one's.
It's actually not a brand, it's a device. Size of the device. And the, the previous one showed them sideways, so you could tell the one on the left was thin and the one in the middle was medium and the one on the right was super fat. But I think they went vertical because now they're showing all the cigarettes each one equals. But the main point is that there's nicotine in all disposable places. Wanting to change this time? She's, she's got a, she has a deadline. It'll be, I think, up near the wings sometime sixty-sixties.
If you're coming back, like, well, I mean, I'm not sure which way it goes.
Well, there is a, there is a billboard prior to, on both sides, so I don't know which one it is.
I also want to show you something I use with Stephen, to keep track of all the projects at non-stop. We do a weekly project list and status, so I just wanted to let you get a feel for what type of things are possibly what. I don't normally send it through the whole board, but if you want it, welcome to it.
Like, in, in, in the conversation last week, I asked Mark to start sending it, so we know what's going on, if you have a question.
Yeah, so then you'll be able to see what's going on at Rec Park and what are the statuses.
So you should be getting it started now.
What bids we're working on, what big projects. One thing, I'll give you a heads up on some pretty interesting meetings going on last week. We had the Sand River Watership Partnership meeting to develop a five-year action plan. And what they were talking a lot about was the Eight Mile River watershed. But Eight Mile River is federally endorsed as a wild and scenic river, which means it receives federal money to, to move about two hundred thousand a year. That they use to hire a full-time watershed manager. Which means it receives federal money to the, to them about two hundred thousand a year, that they use to hire a full-time watershed manager. Now, the, the Sam River watershed is lucky, we get to use this manager one day. That was a lot of them. Um, and it was interesting, we went over a lot of things that the watershed works on, it's, it's a lot more than you would think. Um, it's a lot of research, a lot of study of the water quality, they tie in with the universities, and kids help with that research. And what they're looking for is how to get more money to fund the Sam River watershed, since it doesn't have the federal designation that the Eight Mile watershed does. And one thing they were talking about was a per diem fee per town, based on, I mean, per capita. The per town, but they, they didn't come up with anything concrete, uh, just kind of a start. Of how do we, how do we get more money, do more things in the Sam River watershed, and I, I can.
And what kind of more things would you want to do?
They want to do more analysis of water quality, especially, I know, um. Back when this started, they had grants to do inflow. Analysis of all, or outflow, from every draining, in every town draining in that watershed. So they mapped all the outflows of every town with GPS, and. So you knew you had outflows coming from all these streets hitting the watershed as a drain. A lot of these drains were put in forty years ago, and they just drained somewhere into the woods. Uh, but right now, they're having a lot of problems in country, uh, the salt, they're having wells that are getting contaminated by salt. And they're debating D P.
The new salt was supposed to stop.
Well, they don't, they're, they're researching now, D P says, second, there's salt in the well, it's the town's fault that obfuscated the road. The towns are saying, well, a lot of people don't have proper disposal of their water softening system. Which dumps salt right into the ground, if you don't have it captured in a specific septic system, separate from your normal septic system. Now, but a lot of people dump it straight into the.
Of course they do.
So all that research is what they talk about in these watersheds, and they're, they're more scientific than. But they look for volunteers from the towns to do a lot of their cleanup, back up the rivers, um, they'll have cleanup days.
Problem is money on federal stuff always comes with strings.
Well, here's the problem, Sam River is not federal funded.
Right.
It's, it's locally funded.
That's not a problem.
So that, that's just something that started, and then the other cool meeting we had, Anne went to it. Uh, Beth Lunt, the Public Director, myself, and Tom McGrath. Was the Hop River Trail Alliance meeting, so we had our first meeting to ally. Wyndham, Columbia, Andover, Coventry, Bolton, Vernon, and Manchester, because we all. Order the Hop River walking trail. And what they're saying is that walking trails are an economic engine for towns. When you have great walking trails that people can actually commute on, some people actually go shopping, they get on the bike and. Go into Wyndham and get their farmer's market stuff every week, and they said it's almost a spiritual ride through the trail. And we're only two things left, the Main Moose Bridge, and then the Hop River Bridge, and, um, those. Old Road Bridge, but we get those done, and you'll have, you'll have a really nice group that most states. Don't have, we have the Airline Trail and the Hop River Trail, and this is, Hop River Trail is part of the entire reunion. But this was an organizational meeting to try to coordinate. Maintenance of the trail is deep, does not have any money to make any trails, they don't really have any people left, it's a skeleton crew. Um, so we met, um, David Buckley, he's the D coordinator that we had worked with. And, um, we're gonna organize our public workers crews who are trying to help do maybe some of these trails. And eleven on those lines, line share of the airline trail needs, because it mostly goes to their tax, but the Hop River Trail. Big chunk of it goes through Columbia. So those are kind of things, I'll, I'll keep you all abreast of what's happening, what needs are out there. And how do you get volunteer groups together?
Yeah.
Can you just make sure? No.
Okay, uh, some nice correspondence in there. It's there for your read, if you haven't seen it, you don't get the practical, it's in there, but the question I would ask is, my goodness, why don't you get the? All right, uh, budget, we have some transfers. Move to approve the transfers presenting a total of nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. At the end of the year, it's, uh, basically. From one part of each department over to the same department, but a different area, to keep track of where we spend the capital money, so.
Is everybody doing all the different departments still okay?
Yeah, okay, we just had some, uh, equipment, maintenance.
Yeah, the big, the big tickets are, uh, you know, a truck here, needs supplies, air, air conditioning here, whatever it is. There is some, uh. Description on each one of these in there.
Right, you can even.
Any, uh. Special in questions? All those in favor of the transfers? Oh, thank you. Refund. The A. Make a motion, we approve the refund. In the amount of sixty dollars and thirteen cents. Overpaid tax.
Please. Suggested for interest. I didn't know what he says.
Is it, it was adjusted for interest, correct?
Yeah. Any, any other questions, all those in favor? Bills, make a motion, pay bills in about forty thousand nine hundred and thirty-six thousand eighty-nine cents, consisting of twenty-one, twenty-two regular. Credit card paychecks. It's right there. And doors on the garage up there?
Yeah, you're up there.
The first payment to the environmental group for the lake.
Do you have any additional maintenance to come?
Realize the price of the, uh, electricity for lights, streetlights.
Yeah, that's probably a concern, says he came to me, wanted a streetlight, he took one off of. One pole, moved it to another because it was, the street had closed out, and we didn't need that, so. We're in that.
Some people are actually being built for a streetlight, don't know. Because they requested years ago, it's on their tab, it's not.
Oh, no.
Needed for the tab, so it's on your bill.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Audience of citizens.
Uh, that's just me.
Anybody else? Three new people, well. Two new people, really one new person. Just here visiting?
Yeah, I'm just here to watch out for proceedings and whatnot.
Okay. Anything? Good, seeing none, then, uh, any board member comments before we ask the citizens to depart?
It does have one.
Yeah.
So Beaver Pond saga between Pine Street and Huntford. I've watched this series since they first started trying to get rid of the beavers, and they, every time. So now what's happening is you have the original dam, and you had maybe this much little wetland, you could walk up.
Are you talking about off sixty six?
Off of sixty six.
Yeah.
So now, they, so that, I forget her name, the, the town manager that was here for you.
Natasha.
Natasha had gone and told them, you gotta get rid of the beavers, they're going to flood roads, they, they breached the beaver dam. And, and so now what happens is the beavers have felt threatened, they built that back, of course, now they, they, they never used to. Do the culvert, they never used to plug up the culvert.
They built a dam on the outside.
So now every time they unplug the culvert, a whole bunch of the soil between Beaver Dam. The proper Beaver Dam, and the road is eroding away, so now it's gonna be this deep, it's like three feet deep. It, it's just eroded all out, and I'm sitting there going, why don't I just fill that in? And leave just this little bitty culvert where the beavers went there to bed. Just a thought, because it's becoming a problem now, and they will be doing that twice a year, they're doing it twice a year.
You're saying the state is opening it up?
The state opened it up, what, last week, week before, and I can't believe how much soil went into the lower Beaver Pond. It just eroded away, there's now this big old gorge, and I don't see why they haven't just filled it in.
I can do it.
I can do one, I used to walk there because I used to, they used to have, I don't know. They walk through the hills.
Okay.
Maybe worth talking before it starts falling.
A few weeks ago, I took the, uh, Marine Patrol tour out with John, who's a fairly new, uh, member of Marine Patrol. He was, uh, very interested in, you know, fascinated with a couple hours, so just drove around a couple hours, just. Formed navigating around, you know, the, you know, the perimeter of the lake, it was very interesting, you know, John's a really nice guy, same, you know, the lake and. Just all the different aspects of that, and saw the eagles nest, it was great.
Sleepy Hollow.
Is that Sleepy Hollow?
Yeah, Sleepy Hollow.
And, and just one question, so the, uh, Ergoni Road sign, whatever came about?
Yeah.
We're putting up two new hill parking signs, there were three on the one side of the street, but someone had taken them off by the lakeside. So we need that.
It's funny, because after that meeting, a few days later, I got something saying that. A truck or something was, and a few people were seen hoisting a boat. Over. I don't know, it was an hour ago, to the lake, and I was notified until, you know, the day later, so this is a help. Uh, everybody, all set? Wonderful, so at this time, I'm going to suspend the board's select committee meeting and move into executive session. And I would ask that Mark. With us, everybody else, thank you very much.
We're going into the session at seven forty-three, discuss personnel and real estate.
Hey, it's, uh, eight forty, and we are coming out of the executive session, and, uh, no further actions used to be taken, and I have it to discuss. So we will resume the board's select meeting, and I make the motion, we adjourn at eight forty-one, all those in favor?